All right, thank you and welcome to this meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. Just to remind everyone that mobile phones should be turned off and not used for messages and anything during the meeting, so mine turned off. Thank you. We don't have any apologies, everyone on this committee is here. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, thank you. Item three, to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 3rd of October as a true record. Do I have a proposer and seconda? So councillor Albon proposed, seconda, seconda councillor Ara. Item four, the active Ramsgate meeting. Sorry, oh, thank you. Does everyone agree?
I wasn't sure if that was right, I don't know if councillor Ara was here for that meeting?
No, she wasn't.
Oh, right, okay, so. Thank you, thank you councillor Albon. Would you be prepared to second that the meeting, the minutes of the last meeting are accurate? Because there's only any of us that were here. Those that were here, do we agree that it's a true record? Yes, thank you. All right, apologies for that little bit of confusion. Item four, active Ramsgate meetings, this is just to receive a note in minutes from the active Ramsgate meetings. If anyone's got any queries or questions, please say now. No, in that case, I will hand over to Mrs Faives for item five, active Ramsgate update, please.
I just thought I'd do a really quick overview of what we're doing. I'm doing a verbal update today because it's quite a lot in train, a lot of things I'm going to tell you about as things we are moving forward. You'll get a full report in the next committee meeting because we're waiting on things like survey results and things like that committed. But especially for the benefit of councillors who aren't in the work group or beyond, I thought it would be just good to summarise what we've been doing for so far because we're kind of moving into a delivery phase now after quite a bit of time sort of reviewing and coming up with some strategies. And I've got just a few vigilantes to walk us through, Dean, if you can go to the next slide please. So one of the big things we've been looking at through this time since my start really is a new strategy and direction for active Ramsgate. And that's been looking back at what has worked well and what's been going on over 10 years on and off that we've had active Ramsgate. A big part of that is the market research we're undertaking with over 500 people to really get a good idea of which activities people are drawn in by, which they currently like, which they might be tempted by, to give us some hard data on that which we don't have. We actually are getting those survey results next week, the first draft, so we look forward to those and you'll get a full report, as I say, in the next committee meeting as a written report. Part of that strategy and direction, we're developing an annual plan which will come in for the new financial year. And one of the things we've done is tried to streamline and focus the offering because it's been growing quite a lot over 10 years to a lot of different activities. And we've now streamlined it into these different themes, so we're looking at walking, cycling, exploring, water sorting and wellbeing as a sort of new strand to help streamline and focus what we're offering and in our promotional materials. Can I move you on to the next slide please? As part of our like new strategy and development, we're kind of moving on some of them already. We're waiting for the market research, we're also moving on things that we know have worked well in the past or that we want to develop further. So for example, you know, cycling has been a constant in the active Ramsgate portfolio, it's done well, but at the moment they have higher self-guided facilities. So we've been looking at trying to bring in some bike tour operators to extend that offering. And there's a very good one that already touches on Ramsgate and we're trying to extend the offering that he does in the town and beyond. Similarly, sea swimming, obviously the sea is one of the biggest assets in our portfolio and we have water sports, a lot of water sports already and new ones coming or developing. But sea swimming is something that is also a sort of national trend over water swimming, but we didn't already have sort of lessons or introductory sessions for people who might want to take it up. And the sea sauna as well, when in early talks with Sea Scrub Squaw, Sauna can never say it, Sea Scrub Sauna, who are currently based in Margate and Whitstable, and we're trying to entice them to Ramsgate as well as part of our wellbeing strand. So some new activities already in development. Next slide please. Similarly, as we're collating all this, we're sort of working on how to promote it. There's a lot of promotional material that needs refreshing after the portfolio's been and the whole project's been sort of on pause while I've been reviewing things. But one of the key concepts we've come up with is trying to pitch the different offerings within active Ramsgate to specific audiences. And this is in line with Visit Kent and Visit Vallet. Wider, wider, what am I looking for?
Segmental.
Yeah, and their, and their plans. Try and hit the right people with the right things. So these are kind of some concepts, so on the left, it's very much the active Ramsgate offering to say 18 to 35 year olds who might be visiting from London. The one in the middle is to try and capture and entice intergenerational families that might be looking at something they could do for everyone, but you know, it's centred on the kids. And the one on the far right is more geared to sort of 50s plus what we're calling green spaces, couples who tend to come out of season and are looking at walking in heritage largely. Next slide please, Dean. Alongside the promotion, we're looking at sort of a new programme activity that we're sustaining as we get going. One of those things is to regularly showcase a lot of the different things that we've got going on in our community. We've got kind of the big ticket items that we put out through our big promotional materials. But there's a lot of things going in the community as well, smaller things that we can promote to the community as well. Another big thing we're bringing back this year, which I hope some of you have heard, we're bringing back Active Ramsgate Week from the 26th of May to the 2nd of June. And that's going to be a week of different themed days that bring out all the different things in our portfolio. And it's a real way to promote the offering, but also to give people a taste of the different things that are on offer. Further down the line as well, we're looking at trying to bring in schools programme through active Ramsgate and engage schools, particularly to bring kids down to the beach, especially those who haven't even got down to the beach. Alongside that as well, we're looking down the line to host a series of media visits to showcase our new offering. Next slide. And very finally, one of the new things kind of in the pipeline is a new presence. And it's very early days, but we're talking to TDC about bringing back the Community Beach Hut. That is a total mock-up, I should point out, that is not the real.
It'll be here next week.
But you may or may not have noticed that there is an existing, what was called a Community Beach Hut, which is sat kind of behind Kitty's Corner in front of the main Sands, Royal Sands Development on the wavy blue pavement, paved area. It's never really got off the ground in Ramsgate, there is one in Margate as well that did better. And we are talking to them about taking it over to use it for community groups related to active Ramsgate, so for example, swimming groups are a classic there, but also for us to use as a focal point in the summer when we're doing things like Active Ramsgate Week and to tell other people about Active Ramsgate Week in the busiest months, so having someone there. So far, it's been a positive response from TDC, but it is very early days, they did actually walk away with the keys the other day, so we're still sort of pushing forward on that. It's also, whilst this is kind of trying to reuse this hut as a small presence for active Ramsgate, in a way as well, we're hoping it will be a bit of a prototype for the bigger initiative of the beach club idea, which still sits with TDC and it's not disappeared, but it will need some thinking. And perhaps this could be a good way of prototyping some of the activities we could have down at Main Sands. So that's a very quick whistle-stop tour of seven or eight months of work and how appreciated, there's quite a lot in there. You will be getting a full written report, as I say, for the next one, but a lot's in trade, so I just wanted to sort of give an overview.
Excellent, well done.
Well, I hope that was five minutes, councillor Crittenden said it better than that.
I think you probably were about seven minutes, so actually that was pretty good.
Seven minutes for seven months.
Absolutely.
No, I mean, it's a good 10 minutes.
As I would just say, as Simon has just said, I think it's felt very much like we've been on slow pedal with active Ramsgate over the last, well, over the last year really, since we ceased to have the external contractors. It then took a few months before Simon was able to be appointed and start work. And so much of the first six or seven months of his work has been groundwork preparation and we've just had a slight, a small tick over going on that's been able to come under active Ramsgate. So it's good now to see things are actually beginning to happen. And so this is quite an exciting time for the active Ramsgate project. Any questions to Simon or to Rebecca about the active Ramsgate project?
How currently are we promoting this?
Well, currently, well, it's been a bit on pause. The mainstream of promotion are directly through print, so a lot of leaflets are core promotional stream that go out. And there was an agency that helps target places to get those to the right audiences. Of course, then there's the online promotion, which is primarily the website, but also social as well. And then through the promotional things with the suppliers, with businesses helping to promote us. But it has been largely on pause really. We've had printed material that is just about running out right now, so it's good timing actually that we're about to refresh all of those. So that's a big thing that I work on as we speak actually on all of those streams. Also with active Ramsgate Week, we're very much using it as a promotional event as well because I'm trying to use more of the budget to essentially pay for places on the tasters so that we can work with the suppliers to use their promotional streams as well and it be a joint thing. So that's another thing. But yeah, there's basically a lot to come, there's a lot to come. One of the key things, as I say before, most of the material was very much based on here's the portfolio, because it was growing and growing and growing. It started quite small, you know, now it's gone up to something like 12 different activities. And we could still have that so that someone who wants to know the full thing can pick up one leaflet or go on the website. Equally, we're going to in tandem do these packages where we're trying to cherry pick the things that we think are going to pull in that particular audience or not and promote it just to them. So whether that's in print or via social, like online. And also tie that up, one of the other things of that promotional stream is we're trying to tie it up with other things on offering Ramsgate, so we're leading with say, so take the, see the picture with like the Make Some Waves targeted at say 18 to 35 year olds. We would then, within that material, we would lead with the active Ramsgate offering towards them, but also showcase to them the nightlife and the entertainment that's relevant to them in the town alongside it, you know, whether they might want to go for a drink, for example, and do that for each audience.
So, thank you, that's excellent. So following on from that, so social media wise, what are we on? Active Ramsgate, what is it on?
Because it sits within Visit Ramsgate. So it sits within, it's a bit of, it's actually slightly spread between the existing Visit Ramsgate social channels, which are Instagram, Twitter, Facebook are the key ones. And also the town council's social media channels, which are also those three, and YouTube. And the reason it's split that way is because the offering is partly to external visitors in the visit side and part of it's directed to the local community.
Okay, so it's not worth having any.
Can I just say, I remind everyone that we did agree last, in the last council, originally it was 100% external visitors that the promotion was aimed at for active Ramsgate. As a council, we did agree that we would change it to a 70/30 split. So no, I'm just doing a reminder.
Just one thing I forgot, sorry, one thing that got down the line is as well, we are very fortunate to have support, media support from Visit Vallet, who do various.
That was my second question, so what was Visit Vallet? How have we connected with them?
So we're in close relation with them, we've not really had, the media support from the town houses has been limited and I would like to see more where we're taking the lead to propose media visits based on those experiences. So for example, bring someone, I mean, maybe not timeout, they've actually just done it recently, but like someone who's probably, an element's probably more towards the 18 to 35 to do that experience, that, those ones that we're pitching at once, similarly to get another outlet to come and look at the hikes and the heritage sort of experiences. And we would work with them on that, kind of pitch it a bit more proactively.
Okay, just before I come to Pat, who I handed up just now, I just wanted to confirm, under the old, under active Ramsgate as it was running, we used to have leaflets mainly in the London and the South East at different venues. And I can't remember the name of the company.
Pear Communications.
Pear Communications, used to run that for us. Are we still going to be using broadly the same locations, do you know, or is that a little bit?
We have, we've talked to Pear already and looked at how it's been doing. We are already looking at changing some of those locations. The spread in terms of geographical location isn't going to change hugely. At the moment, we're still aiming for London and South East, but how we target it's going to be a bit smarter.
That makes a lot of sense, that's what I thought. Councillor Moore?
Going back a bit now, beach huts, are you putting them on the road?
So this is part of the discussion, as it stands, it's literally on that wavy blue paving and I think it was, I don't know if it was ever, I don't know if it was ever actually on the sands, I don't know.
I think going back a bit, 40 odd years, we used to have one of those sorts, but they were higher up, I think they were somewhere to lower level.
Yes.
Now, can I just say, when we discussed this at the active Ramsgate Working Group, that question about putting the beach huts on the sands did come up. We're only looking at one beach hut and that is a community beach hut. And at the moment, it was, at the last meeting, it was considered unrealistic or not particularly viable to be putting it on our sands at the moment. I think that will be ongoing reviewed, but I think the way we're looking at using it, it would be where it's going to be as more accessible.
Apart from that, the tide comes in.
There are a whole bunch of, there are a whole bunch of bridges, of which that was one. Yeah, no, it's, there isn't an intention at the moment for it to be moved, so it would stay where it is, that's the intention at the moment, sorry, I just thought.
Well, we are asking TDC, just because it seems to have fallen between the cracks a bit with people moving around. I don't know that it was ever moved onto the sands, I don't.
Don't think it ever was.
No, I don't think they ever planned to, it just didn't happen. I know the Margate one was. And whether, if we did move it, we wouldn't move it far, we might just move it just onto the sands before the summer season, for example. But we don't even know how they moved it, so it's a bit of a fact finding at the moment. But the general position of where it is is kind of where we're hoping for it to be because that's near Kitty's Corner anyway. I mean, if we brought it on the sand, it would just be a bit more visible and a bit closer to those other things, but it might not be feasible or effective, so it's something we're finding out.
Councillor, yeah, thanks Simon, very well done, excellent work, it's an exciting time. I was just wondering, for the wellbeing part, so will you be working with the local groups that are actually, you know, doing stuff by the sea and on the West Cliff as well?
Yes.
Are they involved and also your leisure, are they involved at all?
So basically, yes, we do, and in fact, one of the reasons, we'd sort of talked about wellbeing, I must credit Rebecca here for pushing this strand, but we sort of talked about it as being a sort of overarching thing, because obviously if you're doing any activities, it tends to help your wellbeing in different ways. But there are a growing number of providers locally of very wellbeing focused activities and services. So we're very keen to bring them in. It's early days, but for example, the sauna one is one we're hoping, but there are a lot of yoga places, there's the bath bathroom, there's a lot of growing services. If you've got ones you want to suggest to us that I don't know, then please, please do. On your leisure specifically, I have noted them down as having, you know, spa treatments and things like that, so again, happy to sort of put them in the listing as it were. I also want to talk to them more generally about how they might support during active Ramsgate Week, because we'll be very much pushing our main suppliers, but there's lots of other different businesses that are doing things that kind of go alongside it. So for example, we're hoping to have a day which is more kids focused and I would love it if your leisure and their kids were able to stretch on that day, for example. I don't know what days they're doing at the moment, I need to check, but you know, trying to align them with that or.
They do lots of activities down there.
Yeah, but basically, yeah.
The sauna is really good, we had them for our Ramsgate day, didn't we? Everybody enjoyed.
But yeah, I'm all ears to more people that maybe we can put on that list and showcase.
Any other questions yet? Because I've got one thing to add here. So under this item, we do have a note from Simon about the Town Promotion Officers recommend to end its annual subscription to Visit Kent at a cost of 1,300 per annum. The membership fee is meant to provide promotional support through updates to the Visit Kent website as well as in-kind support on promotional activities. Basically, it's turned out to be a poor value for money and it's not worth it. The money is proposed to be reallocated to the active Ramsgate budget where it can be put to better use. So for this meeting, we just need to have a proposer and a seconda and to agree. So I've got councillor Nixie proposer and seconda from councillor Huxley. Everyone agree? Yeah, okay. So I think that the next stage is that that actually gets approved through either FNG or council usual process that it goes further, but thank you very much. So item six, open public spaces strategy meetings. Can we just receive a note, the minutes from the two previous meetings? Okay. And it's not written on the agenda, but there should be actually a little bit more said about the open spaces strategy group and what's going on there. Now Rebecca has done a report, let me just see if I can find it, it hasn't got an item number, yes it has. Item, it's down as item seven. I'm going to split it out from your town promotion report and cover this first, okay? So it's headed item seven. So Rebecca's report gives a good background of the things that have been happening with the group. And we've got, part of what we're talking about under there is what we're doing with parks and an update on that. Has anyone got any queries on this before I come to talk a little bit more about open spaces? Okay, so very briefly, it was set up to achieve a couple of things in particular. One of them was that we would provide more support and help and encouragement for the volunteer groups that do such an invaluable piece of work around our town, but in particular along our seafront. And that part has been quite successful. Somewhat less successful has been the other half of the contention of the open spaces strategy, which was that our technicians would develop their own suggestion about the pocket parks, which is actually a part of where this came out of in the first place, and take on new areas of work that would infill basically what the volunteer groups are doing. So for example, on the East Cliff, which is the one that I know most about, we have Albion Gardens and we have St Stoke, but then there's all those lovely beds in the middle that are quite horribly neglected. And so one of the things that the technicians originally started with was taking over those, but some other smaller areas as well. What we were trying to do, what we've been trying to do is to get service level agreements with TDC who own those areas so that we can carry them out, even if we don't get paid for it, we can at least carry them out under authority. All I can say is we've got nowhere, really. The only thing that we have managed to get is if you want to do it, get on with it. Now, yeah, just a moment. Now, what we have to decide, full council is going to have to agree this, not just us, but do we as a town promotion committee want to propose that we accept that basis and just get on with it, or do we not? And I think what I'd like out of this meeting is our view on whether or not we accept that position and then we make a recommendation to full council. So, Anne Ray, you?
Very recently, Broadstairs Town Council had a similar problem, really got on to TDC about the front, I can't remember the name of the word for the last name, but anyway, we know the front of Broadstairs. Needed a lot of help and.
I think Victoria Gardens?
Yes, okay. And so TDC put in an effort and helped tidy it up and I'm sure that there were other groups involved, but anyway, what I'm saying is like it took a while for them to do it, but they managed to get it. So first of all, I don't think we should give up on the fact that it is TDC's responsibility and we need to keep lobbying them about this because that's just a bit off if they're just going to say, you can do it. Because obviously if we can do it, that's great, but there's an element of, you know, machinery funding, planting, bulbs, et cetera, et cetera. So if there's costs involved, then, you know, we need to consider that. So my opinion is, yes, we do it because we want it to look beautiful and we do it the best that we can because it only benefits others. But as I say all the time, and we promote that largely, do you know what I mean? We really push the fact that this is Ramsgate Town Council, we're not in TDC, I'm not doing it to try and undermine them or anything, but we promote the fact that Ramsgate Town Council are really looking after our town and we use that as an opportunity if we want to do it, and I think we should.
I think you're right, I've got no problem with that. Councillor Albon?
Yeah, just a point of caution for councillor Nixie. I was involved in dealing with the Victoria Garden thing and gave advice to the, because obviously the town council there, the mayor runs the council, he goes, David, we've got a chair. So I met with the mayor and if what we, the advice that I gave them was for them to get their own gardener. Because Thunick Council doesn't do gardening. It does all the hedges and it cuts all the hedges and we had to get the supervisor out because we didn't have the staff, so that was done. But subsequently, Broadstairs Town Council. was done. But subsequently, Broadstairs Town Council have now taken out a licence or a lease, whatever way it is, I'm not quite sure about that, and taken over the responsibility of all of the Victoria gardens. And that includes cutting the grass and all the planted areas. And they have now employed a full-time gardener to carry out that work. So I think that was important to point out.
Yes, you're right. If I could just come back and a little bit to that. Yes, Simon, we are aware of the gardener. As far as the lease or the licence is concerned...
Chancy, his name is.
As far as the lease or the licence is concerned, this is what we're not getting from TDC. How they've achieved that, I'd like to know, because the only response that we've had is if you want to do it, do it.
Yeah, because sorry, that's what I was about to come up, but I'm happy to thank you.
Yes.
And I, and I remember that conversation, I understand it. But at the end of the day, what, so how did they get to that bit? What is the TDC agreement with them?
Well, the TDC, well, the TDC agreement is, is they take over the gardens in perpetuity under a licence stroke lease, whatever it may be, and they get on with it.
Right.
That's, that's, that is all there is to it.
Yes.
And of course, if there is some time that they can't do it, or they won't be able to do it anymore, the funds don't let them do it anymore, then TDC probably has a right to take that back. I also think, just so you know, I was, my gas had never been so flattered as to when I found out that they got their licence done ever so quick. I don't know, who knows who or what knows what. But as the cabinet member for it, I had no involvement in it. It was all officer led and done. So that gives us, in my humble opinion, was the good town clerk. And as the chairman of the council, they have to go back and say, hey, you sorted that out, sorted that out at PDQ, let's do it for Ramsgate.
Yeah. So, so again, through the chair, sorry, chair, is it worth therefore contacting the mayor of Broadstairs of whom we know and just like, who was your link then? Who did you talk to?
Yeah, I mean...
Well, I know who they talked to.
I did, I mean, I only just found out now
Yeah.
that they have some kind of licence or lease. So that, that's new to me. So I certainly agree that we actually do need to follow that up. What I was, I just want to come back to on this, before I do that, something else. One of the other goals of the open spaces strategy was that we would train up, arrange for apprenticeship or however it would work for one of our own technicians to have qualifications and increased knowledge of gardening.
Yeah.
As opposed, actually stop that from happening has been the fact that we've had so many changes. Obviously, Chris, and then we've had staff changes and everything else. So that hasn't been progressed. We did discuss it with Maxine the other day, didn't we? I mean, it's still something, something that they would welcome. It's not a problem, but it just hasn't happened because we haven't been able to do it. So that's still a pipeline. What I have here, what I have here is a draft of a document that Laura has put together on the issue that we're talking about now to go to full council. Because if we are to just get on with it, then that needs to be a full council decision because there are implications that go with it. So before we come back to talking about following up with the Broadstairs mayor about how they managed to get it, just, I don't want to read all of it. TDC wants to provide service level agreement for certain landwork. Andrea Plant, TDC have a property recommendation. Just get on and do it without a licence similar. The thinking behind this is that TDC's estate team's incredibly busy and they do not have time to write SLAs for these parcels of land. It is also expected that RTC's work will be low risk, which TDC doesn't need to mitigate. When Tony Momo, head of Coastal and Public Realm, started, he checked with his colleagues that just get on with it without a formal agreement was the final position. And this is the only thing that TDC can agree to at this time. There are benefits to RTC with this proposal. Responsibility for the areas will remain with TDC. So larger maintenance matters such as tree work will remain TDC's responsibility. We don't have the skills in-house for tree work, so tree work is possibly for RTC, which comes back to the point that you made about equipment and other stuff. The next step will be technicians and the open spaces strategy group to look at each area and come up with a plan of what is required, what improvements plants will be beneficial, how much manpower is required. This plan will then be presented to TDC and if they're happy, we're welcome to progress with this work. There has been a draft already done for the east cliff beds, hasn't there?
Yeah.
But before this happens, before we go any further with that, the council is asked to consider if this is a way of working in which principle, which in principle members are happy to agree with. In other words, maintaining TDC land without formal recognition or agreement in place. So that is the draft that Laura has written for full council. The question is, do we want to say go ahead with it? Or do we want to say more investigations first with the mayor of Broadstairs? So I can, we'll start with councillor...
I think we should go with the town clerk's recommendation. We've waited too long already because it wasn't for him.
councillor Albin?
Yeah, I think when we were looking to put the parks in, where the, where the lollipops came out, you know, we were just, oh, can't dig down here. Can't dig down with what's happening there. So that's a concern. I'm not...
They do know what's under there.
I mean, but what I'm saying is, if we're, if we're just going to do this, and I can see, I can see why the town clerk has given you the option of that. Because well, we just go and do it and we'll follow up with whatever needs, what needs, needs to be done. It doesn't matter what Broadstairs are. We've got to do what we do. It doesn't matter what, who they, I know who they talk to and I know that we've not been treated fairly at Ramsgate Town Council because we've been on about this for bloody years.
This is over a year?
Yeah. Well, plus all the other stuff that we're taking on, you know, when we first got elected in 2019, they're taking on Albion Gardens. That never comes to me, you know, it's just, we just push back and push back and push back. But I do take on board what councillor Nixie said, you know, this is Thannick District Council's responsibility. So if we decide to, as in this committee, to put forward a recommendation to council, to go forward with the recommendation, to progress without a formal agreement in place for TDC, I'm just concerned about that. I really can't, what I think should happen is we, we as Ramsgate Town Council do a report to Thannick District Council, a full report on that, say, these are the areas that we wish to take on. We're going to do this because you said...
But we've done it already, isn't it?
No, 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 no. But, yeah, but the facts of the matter is, certain person wasn't a cabinet member for open spaces at the time, but he is now, or they are now, whoever that they, whoever this person is. So that for me is something, because I actually think this probably isn't just an officer decision, because we're talking another party taking on council-owned, Thannick District Council's own land. It doesn't matter because if we're a town council, that matters not. Legally, you've got a process to go through.
Okay, can I, can I just come back on a differentiation here? We are already going with it on some smaller pieces.
Are we?
Yes, we are. Because we look after, we look after the, the...
St Lawrence.
Broad Street, that's the one I was thinking of, St Lawrence, little tiny area. So you know by Car Park, we, okay, so we do that.
Talking about on the, you're talking about on the east cliff or the west cliff, are you?
No, however, the east...
That's what we're going to do. We're not going to do a whole lot.
However, the east cliff is a much bigger piece of land in, we're talking about the Broadstairs there. The other thing, the one thing I wanted to draw out here is this talks about SLAs.
It talks about SLAs.
Broadstairs have agreed a licence or lease.
Exactly.
And that is a considerable difference. So what I, what we could come out of this meeting with is instead of going ahead with the draft, which is about SLAs, is that we make a recommendation to Laura that we actually look at a licence or lease. We find out more about Broadstairs and look at a licence or lease.
But that's effectively what councillor Albin has just said.
Yes, but I'm just...
For TDC to do exactly that, yeah.
And we can do that and, and it can, I don't know whether it comes to cabinet or what, I don't know.
Well...
But I'll find out.
It's a political worm now, TDC to do that, as you say.
Yes.
You know, we have had various blockages for five years now.
Well, this, I mean, this has been...
We need drain cleaner.
So, yes.
Indeed.
If I, if I could, I would propose that firstly, we just get on and tidy it up and do whatever we can do. And even if that's rewilding or something different and make it stand out of it, do you mean not literally, particularly as in like showcases is what we're doing? But the councillor Albin's suggestion is, is right in the sense that we do make some sort of like formal declaration of what we're doing in these areas for the town council or us or whomever to present to TDC. Because at the end of the day, we want it to be underwritten by them and Broadstairs can have it, so can we. And it is the better way. So, so my proposal is we get on and do stuff, but we do what councillor Albin suggested before.
We pursue either a licence or a lease.
I think a licence, I don't need a lease.
License.
License.
But again, you know, the east cliff banks, and we've asked for a licence, nothing's happened.
Well, it's progressing according to this.
Somewhere.
That I've read somewhere. I think it's in Laura's report, isn't it?
It's pursuing a lease, but you know, we've asked for that eight, a year ago.
Yeah.
You know.
But it's more than that. It's about two, three years now.
The technicians have been doing work on the east cliff, just off the ground back, which is fine. Near the Bantstone, they've done stuff there and near the Puget Bust.
Yeah.
So it's happening anyway.
I understand that.
It's TDC, don't really care.
No, I, I take that. I, I take that, of course, because that's what they're doing.
Hang on a minute, I'm, I'm letting it...
Apologize.
But let's, let's have a little bit of...
As she says, you know, cutting down a tree that's gone, you know, fast, they have to do that at TDC.
Okay.
Do we really need an agreement with that?
We, we have a suggestion, a proposal, that we get on with a certain amount of work that keeps it looking as tidy as possible. Not necessarily dealing with additional planting or anything that would incur costs, I would suggest, but a minimum amount of tidying work. At the same time, we pursue a licence or a lease, whichever is appropriate. We can pursue that as an alternative to yes or no.
Chair, if I may, is that we identify what areas that we're doing. We have to say what areas we want in the licence, in the licence.
It's on there.
Well, well, let's do it. I mean, let's do it again. I can ask for, you know, pull your hair out all your, I would if I had it myself. But we've got to, you know, we need to do the thing the right way. And the reason we need to do the thing the right way, one is for our staff.
Absolutely.
Or on someone else's land doing work that they, with that. It's all right for an officer sitting there going, just go away and do what you want until something goes wrong.
Okay. So in that case, councillor Albin, if I can ask you, we are already doing work around Ramsgate on areas that we have neither licence, lease nor SLA in small ways. So for example, the Broad Street area, grass area with the bench, between Broad Street and South Street Car Park.
Oh, okay.
That little bit of area. Our technicians do that. There's the St Lawrence area, that green, that small bit there. They're not areas I would think that we would have a licence. You know, they're little patches of grass. Another one that we do and have done are outside the hoardings in Northwood, because our technicians did that quite recently. And I'm sure you, you know, there are about a couple more.
Can I come back?
Yes, you may.
No disrespect, no disrespect meant whatsoever, but they have no authority to do that. Our staff have no authority to go away and do that. If they were working under them, hoardings and the hoarding fell down. I, I know it's a, you know, massive big if, but you've only got to look what's happened with the storms recently. But we have to protect them. Our staff would not be insured. You've got to, you know, I'm sorry, but you're dealing, we're dealing with this, we need to do it properly. We need to get all of the places that our staff are working on within a licence, can be one licence to cover the whole thing. We don't need individual licences to cover the one thing and get it down and get it done and get it done legally.
Most of those areas are technical...
But it's up to...
Most of those areas our technicians have been working on since before the open spaces strategy started, I think. Yes, I've just had to confirm. Okay, councillor Huxley wants to say something, so I'm going to go back to councillor Huxley.
I think the town clerk contacted TDC originally and said these are the pocket parks we want.
And got no reply.
Probably.
Yes, there was no reply for a long time and then eventually it was, oh, just get on with it. So, okay, I mean, I completely agree with what councillor Nixie has said, but we do try and tidy up or keep tidy the, those areas. But we also pursue, but you're saying you don't want us to carry on with the work.
Chair, all I'm saying is I want us to be legal so our staff are protected and we do the right thing. That's all I'm saying. It's all right for an officer at Thannick District Council to say, you can do what you want.
I know. Good. It's not all right, it's inappropriate.
If they again takes, you know, years to give us a response, then...
What did it say?
Just leave them.
So a couple of more remarks by then.
Hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Councillor Moore wanted to say something. Oh, sorry, Rebecca wanted to say something, I missed that.
Yes. So it's just a mini update specifically on the east cliff beds this, this week where we thought trying a slightly different strategy where we, we came up with a plan for those beds. And there, there are quite a few of them. There's potentially 14 spaces, maybe 15. And had a site visit with the three main technicians this week and, and came up with a plan aligning with our palms problem and, and the funding we've got there. And, and we came up with a plan that we then, for Maxine's good relations with some of the officers and open, in their open spaces, that this sort of communication's already started about, they've probably got some manpower that can help. They've got the plan for them too, but they haven't got the funds to perhaps do all the things they want to. So just this evening before I came to this meeting, I was sent an email threat that I kept being dropped from. But it was saying that we've got an opportunity to perhaps work with TDC's open spaces, which might alleviate some of those concerns that councillor Albin was considering. And also where, where we've got perhaps a bit of funding to help specifically get rid of our park, and because our knowledge of those beds. So for example, something that councillor Nixie said about conservation and looking up, not just getting rid of plants for the sake of it. There are two bushes up there that were teeming with birds. It was like they were having a little conference in one of them. So there's, there's issues. If we work together with TDC's staff on this, we might find we can actually make some progress. So it's just something that's happened today and yesterday, but...
I think the challenge of that is the informality that is what's concerning councillor Albin. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to second councillor Nixie's proposal that we do get on with it for now. I want this to go to a vote. So I'm going to second that because I, I think we are working, at, at a worker level, TDC and RTC work quite well together as Rebecca has just described. So if I second that, can we have a vote on that proposal that we, we do continue as we are with some informal working whilst at the same time pursuing instead of SLAs, a licence? Can I have those in favour, please? And against? And abstentions? So that's carried. And councillor Albin, can I ask you to talk to Laura about what you know about the licence with... with, um, Broadstairs Town Council continue to liaise?
I think that's a totally different issue, chair.
Well, if we're going to assume.
In fact, sorry, in, in fact, that Broadstairs Town, Town Council will take over a whole park effectively and employ someone to do the work, which is totally different to what we're talking about.
I was thinking more of the procedural of who they spoke to and.
Well.
Rather than.
Chair, if I were to come back, it's, it's that the town clerk is constantly in contact with, uh, the head of service, Andrea Plant, in relation to the land and the difficulties coming is where um, the land issues are dealt with by estates, but also the, then you've got open spaces issue which are dealt with by Tony, Tony Marmo. Um, what I can do, um, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with um, the heads of service and the director, so I will raise that tomorrow. And, um, because I, I, I think for, for me, uh, to go through the head of service of, uh, open spaces is the, the best way forward. Um, and he can put something, he can put something forward and I'll get Laura to, we'll, I'll work with Laura and get exactly what, as long as I know exactly the areas.
Um, Rebecca, can you, um, send Steve the most recent, or between you and Dean, send Steve the most recent list of areas that are being covered?
You've got a pen here.
Um, and so just, um, yeah, we'll stick with that. Thank you. Right, uh, let's just catch up with myself. Was there anything else under open spaces? Because I think that is covered that. No? Okay, so the rest of the town promotion update, over to Rebecca.
Uh, so the first thing was about town beautification, so I've just added lots of pictures and a list to give you an idea of things that are coming, um, various spaces, uh, starting with the Ramsay Station panels that you'll see. The colour palette there, the three end colours from the mustard, the teal and the red, the colours obviously didn't come out exactly how it goes. Those are some pretty nice colours that we're looking at, um, bringing to town in various ways, uh, including having some pow, uh, planters powder coated, uh, so we like the, the, um, oil drunk, a mini version of the oil drunk. So that they can be used to the businesses along Harbour Street and overall for High Street and any other places that would accept them. Uh, and have pavement space to inject a bit of colour in line with some of the reports that TDC commissioned in the last few years regarding how much it can make, it lift a place when you put some colours into it. Um, and those colours will also be used for the benches where councillor Liverpool um, funding up twenty of the district council benches, but again, we're working at officer level with regards, um, to, um, getting them up in outens, uh, to the local company coating. Um, and essentially we're waiting for Andrea Plant to come back, I guess that's it. But, but we're, we're, we're working on that. Certainly, you know, rail have, um, asset services for permissions. Whether it's adding extensions to those building or putting some artwork up in their subway. And it's the same application process, which is.
Annoying.
It's extensive. Um, that's, that's progressing, um, and that artwork, but you see underneath the palette, those two will feature in the subway as then, um, shown to you in the mock-up underneath. And I can give, I can send you larger versions of them if you wanted to see, see them in, in their full monoprint and technical. And another initiative is on page four of this item. So, and this is about, we're looking at something for the summer and these birds kind of popped out at us and, and I'm working with some of the Famic District Council cultural consortium project offices, um, because there is a little bit of budget from them as well for these. Um, so instead of bunting, we would have this sort of flock of birds, whatever, ravens or seagulls, whatever you imagine them to be, and they could be sort of flying up Harbour and High Street. So it's almost mimicking that Ravens Cliff Gap, if you like, um, from the original name, uh, Hugh and Steve of Ramsgate. And then the next page, you'll see those, these are just over a metre high, um, plaster, oh, what's it called? Fiberglass, um, moulds of ravens. This is what the youth cultural consortium decided to do. And they, they put out a, a call to youth organisations to design different coloured styles for their ravens and these are the winning ones. The photos don't do them justice. They look fabulous, they really do. And they're going to be in the trail around town, so it'll be our short chief of colourful powers, you know. It, it's lovely and it's quite inspired, um, that there's the one at the top middle there. He's dressed like a secret devil. And the one next to him is, is the home edit group who've chosen to do Puget's. That's like flat patterned Puget style. So, um, it's a really cool and, and very expertly painted as well, I add. You can, if you sort of go to the new creative hub that's, um, TDC have now purchased for Bower with future High Street funding for the deal which number five A Broad Street. In the Staffordshire car park section, you look in the window, you will see them. It's still there being. They're, they're lovely. Um, so, um, it's really just a sort of keep you up to date with some of the progress. Um, one of the things I haven't mentioned in here because it's sort of only just happened was the idea about the obelisk lighting, that arch to complement the now approved festival lights lighting up the harbour arches. And having that complimentary linear, um, design of lighting up the obelisk. And first sort of, not, not really a pre-op, but the first discussions with the conservation officer and were really hostile. She loved the idea and thought it would look great with, with that. So that's potentially a new, a project for.
Brilliant.
For next year. Um, can we, sorry to interrupt, can we just go back to this again? Um, so whose initiative was, was this, was this covered? I don't think you possibly did. But who started it all? Was this a TDC thing? What, the ravens or? Um, it was, no, it was, um, it was when we were doing, was it being historic? It was in the house and all that. It came up about the fact that our original name, Hugh and Steve. Yes. Meant Ravens Cliff Gap.
So it was us though? So it was, it was Ramsgate?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, and I will, I will say this in every single meeting, especially in the town one, it's like, and how we're promoting this, because why don't people know about it until now? Why is it like coming soon or, you know, watch out for that? Why aren't we pushing this? So people don't just go, oh, what are those when they come out? But they're actually actively looking for them or excited about them or what have you?
Um, with the youth culture consortium, it's, it's led by a TDC officer, because that's part of their funding.
That's what I wondered.
And, and they're sort of trying, they're keeping that bit under wraps because they want to have this sort of big launch, which is going to happen in March. But I, I, I see what you're saying. I think it's a good idea, even if it's just a sweet preview of me. I think it's a really good idea.
Are we always going to start with opportunities of like, yeah, pushing things?
Yeah.
Right, sorry.
No, I, I think it's, it's a good point and, um, it will start to get piggybacked and, and thinking about why ravens. And, and that actually is quite unique for our town and, and that reference.
So could we, so I see, could we do something when it happens and on, on all our social media or what have you, we just keep adding it?
But they're beautiful, aren't they?
Be a day, that's what you want.
I like the one on the top right. That's it. Um, the other thing, uh, massive miss is not in here, um. Uh, anything to say on the harbour lights?
Only that, um, yes, thank you, chair. Um, it's, we, there, there is supposed to be a survey happening of, of the arches. However, I think we plan to work very sensitively with the building. Um, so I think we should progress that. Um, I did have a meeting with the harbour master today, but it was about something else. Uh, the, the fireworks in fact. Um, so, but I plan to have a conversation with him about getting that started because I think the sooner we get that underway, the better. And actually, there's a few changes that are there that will really make it to our advantage, um, and, and hope that we can have a sort of big impact with that. And now we have all of us, we can all operate the cherry pickers now and have the licences. It would, it's a good time to actually.
So, so the other project that, um, Rebecca has been working on, um, is of course the lighting of the obelisk. Um, however, because we had to snatch a certain amount of money out of the town promotion budget um, that will be going to full council coming up, um, the obelisk project is deferred for one year, not cancelled or anything else, it's deferred. So it was a case of prioritising. So the ravens route and the harbour lights were both further advanced and made more sense to continue with those. So that, um, that's all part of the budget that will be going to full council in due course, um, to be agreed. Just worth mentioning it here because otherwise it would have come up. Um, so are you okay to move on to the next bit, which is the town centre general appearance? So, um.
So this, this next section is, is obviously because of a long town beautification. In the, it's about the general appearance. So there, there have been comments and some of those comments have been addressed with councillors. Um, so it's been brought to my attention that we need to consider ways that we can perhaps try and improve on, on, on those sort of comments that were quite negative about the state of the town. So, um, that one of the questions is that we, that we focus the Faceless Thursday so that, um, instead of you know, just one maybe in the town centre and then three in various other areas in town uh, across the town and the halls, we, we have two, um, up to the spring or up to April and in the view that are entirely focused on the town centre. So it's about graffiti.
I think.
Um, the, you know, fly posters, uh, planting, weeding, hot spraying.
Hot foam.
Not hot foaming, no. Um.
Oh, jet washing.
Um, just trying to generally lift the appearance, um, of, of the town centre. And then there's some other work that we're looking to do in Charlotte Court, which, um, will be painting the street furniture in there and, and replanting maybe some more sustainable, larger plants.
If I can just add into that, something that you, we were talking about the other day is the original idea of Facelift Thursday was that it would actually be focused more on the town centre because the town centre is related to, um, our visitor economy.
It was.
But with.
Another court councillor, it was very much a case of to, to tackle the parts of Ramsgate that weren't getting up by TDC, that were an eyesore. Yes, admittedly, there's an awful lot in the town centre, but it was very much a case of like Ramsgate. And as a, as an further out councillor, I get an awful lot of complaints about things that nobody sees except those residents day in, day out. So I do think, I mean, I agree with you, it needs to be done. And I think up until April, it's possibly an excellent idea because then it gives you a cut off point. But let's not forget what else is going on the rest of town, because Newington never got in other areas, Northwood, et cetera, et cetera. Needs a lot of stuff done.
Not, I mean, I, I live in one of the out of town wards, so I, I know what my, where I live looks like, although I, I represent a town centre ward, I, I don't live.
Yeah, but it's as equal, but with Ramsgate, it's, it's equally important to look after the residents that are here as well as.
Absolutely.
People that are using the town centre if that's a visitor or residents coming in.
Anyway, are we happy to, um, follow the recommendations, to note the implementation, um, of all that we've said regarding, uh, what was included in the report? And the mention that, uh, we had added in about the harbour lights? Um, and are we happy to approve a minimum of, a minimum of two facelift Thursdays per month uh, focusing on the town centre?
Until April.
Until April. Uh, so at the moment it says until further notice, but until April and then. Uh, when's the next town promotion committee meeting is? 10th of April. So review on the 10th of April? Okay.
Yeah, can I just might, and that is that obviously, uh, should the, should the standard council's budget go through, which I'm sure it will, uh, that a major part of that and a major, and a major thing for Ramsgate, uh, is the, the amount of money that's been put forward together with two specific staff to, uh, attack um, the graffiti, not only in Ramsgate but across the island. And I think that that's, that's something, and I, and I think that's something that will, it's the main thing that people moan about as far as I, what, what I get. Right, that amount of graffiti around it. You kind of, when you come into the town centre, that's where it's plastered. And, and I think the sooner the, we get that done, and hopefully we'll get that in place, uh, and up and running by May. Uh, don't hold me to that, but, but that's what I would love to actually see. I'm not in control of that, by the way, but I think it's something that we should, that will brighten the town up. Once it gets rid of that, and it won't all come back again, but I think that's an important, that's an important part for the town where nothing's been done for years.
Um, regarding the town centre, someone seems to have been attacking the Staffordshire, Staffordshire Street car park beds and they are looking wonderful by comparison. So I'm, I'm very pleased with that. Um, I don't know if that's TDC doing it. I'm assuming it's not RTC, so I'm. Yeah, no, I, no, no. Yeah, they're, they're looking, looking much improved. Yeah, so, um, the only other thing I, I think actually I, I meant to mention just now, um, councillor Laura asked me, um, uh, a couple of weeks ago about the, uh, beautification that was, uh, discussed, um, for Harbour Street. Um, which we never came off with. It was the lighting, wasn't it? It was the hanging baskets and the lights and things like that. Um, there are other plans around the bollards and, and other things and planters rather than the lighting because that has just never been viable. So I think it's just worth mentioning that, um, because that has been something that's been discussed before. Um, so, I'm sorry, that was a slight distraction. Are we all agreed? Um, to approve the minimum of two facelift Thursdays? Is everyone agreed on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, brilliant, okay. Um, also under the town pollution is, um, the item for the events update and proposal for our TDC event underspend. So, um, we do need to make some changes to the proposals at the end. Um, but is there anything you want to say about the events update?
Uh, well, I think it's worth noting that we, we have got an underspend of, uh, around thirteen thousand pounds in our council events. And most of that is due to the unfortunate conservations of fireworks displays. Um, and, and as bike and fireworks do not receive payment if their displays are cancelled. And that credit to their staff on the new year's team if they actually refused their wage for that evening, despite the fact that they were there at between, uh, at seven, eight, the eighth o'clock till they left about half nine to eleven o'clock. And very disappointed, um, because of course it impacts on them when they don't put a display on. Um, I think it's also worth noting, given the, the, um, some of the comments that we've seen on social. on social media, that we only ever cancel a firework display when there's risk to public, which there were on both occasions last year. If I was to include the first one being the New Year's, we've had three in a row cancelled. All three were because of risks to the public and insurwinds. These aren't household biofischen fireworks, they're public display fireworks. And a millimetre of the works of basically one, one millimetre goes a metre. So when they're 125mm fuse firework, it will go 125 metres. And that can go off, that's two and a half kilos that will then drop somewhere. And that can go an awful long way when the winds are in a different, wrong direction. And that I just wanted to make as a point because we've all sort of had various comments from the public about our firework displays.
Can I just make a point there, Chair, if I may? And that is to say that, let's put this way, the main culprit of those comments that were made, are made about councillors as well, has been written to by the town clerk and myself. And told that we do not spread that behaviour anymore. And we've had no response. This is good. So, thank you.
So the reason for this report, not just to say that, but there is an opportunity because we, our events fund and our Ramsgate fund, thanks to Deans publicising them on a regular basis and our community, they're very keen to put on events. There is an opportunity to support a number of new initiatives which I've listed in this report, which range from one that's been whispered about on social media, should I say? And so we work and describe it because I only seen the odd piece about something called Pirate Day. Again, there's been talks about a literary event and re-energising something there. Ramsgate Day of course had its inaugural event in October with terrible weather, but they're keen to do that again. An opportunity to perhaps put on some family friendly events in Charlotte Court to discourage some of the antisocial behaviour we see there and encourage our residents to use it and with the hope that also we'll be able to continue with the artisan market that has worked in that space last year. And then another option, which is something that's done in other coastal towns like Weymouth, is helping to support in funding some boring bits of administration such as road closure out here, like we've done for a few years for different long, three day events. But the businesses are responsible for that, so they marshal it, they fund elements of it. And then it's basically a base then for a sort of, more a people friendly space than a vehicle friendly space in this section here. And looking at something like that over the six weekends of the school holidays, for example. And then it's up to the businesses to collaborate with whether they add things on to that and they apply to do that as an event with Fannick District Council. For example, to close that section of road with the, with the suspension of the parking costs around £700 to £800 a day with the marshals. So, you know, you're looking at £1600 less than, about £1500 per weekend. As a possible investment, there's something that we then look to do and people know that Ramsgate will have that section. It's a great place to go to just chill and explore the area around. So hopefully it will benefit the economy during that period. And then the other option for consideration was to consider wiring over that underspend for some of the town beautification or new projects that can support the capital spend on those, such as the Ravenbird installation. We're looking at 150 of those to make a real palette in mass. You know, that is about £10 grand. They all last, they're made out of recycled plastic bottles, but it is a great capital spend. Also the lighting of the obelisk, town visiting map. So there are other possible town promotion capital spends that that money could also be via to, or a slip, of course.
Yeah. So thank you. It's at the end of that. So firstly, are there any questions about what's going?
Yeah, well, just one, I just, I know when we met last week and we were talking about event and trying to think of something maybe in place of fireworks and stuff like that. We do have a, we do have a long history with the Viking ship. And I wondered whether there was anything that we could do in relation, which we could interact with the kids about Vikings or stuff because they came here and they did, you know. I don't know how long, I don't know how long that ship's been with us.
1930. It was there when I was lit across.
Oh, that's a long, long time ago then, so. But I mean, you know, not, I've just wondered, is that something to kind of look into or stuff, you know? Because I just fancy a bit of axe throwing and stuff like that.
Ooh, you little devil.
Other Viking den than pirates.
Yeah, yeah. I think the Viking, and I just think it's a cultural thing as well, you know. Mind you, I was reading about pirates this morning, I have to say, and I wouldn't have liked to be one of them. Sorry, I just wanted to chuck that in.
Oh, I will leave, I will leave Rebecca to add that to her list of considerations. So I think that's, so any other questions or comments?
I need to add pawns on their helmet, to say that, never had.
Councillor. It doesn't matter what time of year and, you know, something looks nice, everybody's lifted from it, aren't they? So, I mean, I'd be very encouraged to see the obelisk being lit up. It's much like lighting, especially in the summer. We do, we, the boats, you know, do a sterling job over Christmas, don't they, and rest of it, and it does make a difference. So I would encourage that possibly more than I would for some sort of like one day events that might not get the promotion it needs, might be a bit lackluster, whereas something that could be a constant and we could be known for and looks good all the time, then I would very much appreciate.
Right. So one of the things that we had to do a couple of months ago was look at how we could save almost £40,000 from our original proposed budget. And the obelisk project was probably underestimated at £14,000.
That's cheers, sorry, didn't.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. We took the fireworks out, so that's not a proposed event for next New Year's Eve, or coming New Year's Eve. The question really is where we would, we have two options really with the 13,000. We either leave it to fall, in which case it goes back into RTC's main fund, which, on my right piece of paper, the town clerk has said would be very nice because there are some things which it would be welcome to be spent. I'm just trying to find it. Capital projects budget for use on things such as the technicians accommodation, the lift and any leases with TDC. Unspent money is proposed to go to a very good home. Alternatively, we can wire it forward into the next budget for 2425, in which case we would need to come up with a recommendation as to which part of that budget, which is coming back to what you've just said, you've just said you prefer the obelisk. So does anyone else have any other preferences? Councillor Orville?
I know, do you know what? I came in this evening and I thought, I'm not going to say anything tonight, I just wanted to let out a bit, but I can't keep my God shut as usual. Thanks. I just think that the town motion, that budget, that money should sit where it is and stay where it is because something may come up during, which is not unforeseen, but it's cost more than what we expect it to. And I just think that it should stay in there. I'm more than happy to fully support that.
We do have to allocate it, we can't just have a £13,000.
Allocate it to Cheers Fanday.
Sat there just in case. We do have to fit it somewhere in, into here. And. Where we, we took.
I don't know, the platter.
Money, significant money last time was from council events, the new budget, the new projects within TP budget and obviously the fireworks and the obelisk. That's where most of the money was, was lost or gained, however you want to, to consider it. So those are probably the areas where we could be best looking at putting it back.
But I dare, Chair.
So I have councillor Nixie saying the obelisk. Do I have any, do I have any other?
Yes, bang it on the obelisk and if you need it for something else, we'll change it, yeah. High five.
Right, anyone else? No, it looks like you've got your obelisk back. She knows we've had a fight over that. Okay, so the proposal, I need to formally say for the minutes that the proposal is that we wire it forward into the next budget so that we can actually put the obelisk back and it's targeted at the obelisk. Right, and everyone agree?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. In which case, has anyone else got anything before I do date and time the next meeting? Date and time the next meeting is Wednesday, 10th of April. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair.